I'd like to call this meeting to show the City Council to order. Show, roll call, all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Kukavas who has to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Judd to lead us in invocation, followed by the pledge by Councilman Whipple. If you'd all like to join us, you may stand and do so.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity. We have to be together in our City Council meeting today. We ask that a spirit will be with us and that we can discuss the things that are important to the city. We're grateful for citizens of Cholo and the service and everything that they do for our town to make it a great place to live. We're grateful for our city employees, for our first responders, our police firefighters, our military, and ask that thou bless them, watch over and protect them. Yes, that thou will help us to make decisions that are helpful and useful to the city this evening, and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Judd, Councilman Whipple. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. City Attorney?
Mayor, Council. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of City Council. Pursuant to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual City Council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review the matter, and ask that the matter be put on a future agenda.
Thank you. I have one item. I'll call up Mayor Irwin from Pine Top if you'd like to come up with your group. Since you're the speaker of...
No, I'm the president.
Well, whoever, get on up. I don't want to name all these names off. Mayor Irwin, or Keith, or whoever.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Cholo City Council and staff. These are members of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and this is really them wanting to come tonight to speak to you. So we've got a great group of individual kids. They really kind of restore your faith in the future of our country and our communities. So I'm going to turn it over to them. The chairman of this group is Ms. Grace Smithson.
Good evening, Town Council. So like Mayor introduced us, we are, we call ourselves MIAC. We're the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee for Pine Top Lakeside, and we are here on behalf of the local nonprofit Backpack Snacks. So about one in seven kids in Navajo County face food insecurity, which is when they don't always know where their next meal is coming from. And a lot of kids in our towns are free, are eligible for free and reduced lunch at schools like Blue Ridge and Cholo. But on the weekends, these kids go home and they don't have any food at their houses. So Backpack Snacks collects nonperishable food like mac and cheese, canned soup and ravioli, ramen noodles, fruit cups, granola bars, and the works. And then volunteers come in and we bag it, and then they distribute it to the kids on Thursday or Friday so the kids can take home this food over the weekends. And Backpack Snacks feeds about 40 to 50 kids in the Blue Ridge School District and 90 to 100 kids in the Cholo School District. People can drop off donations at all of the Cholo Elementarys, at Blue Ridge High School, Helmet the Jeweler, and the Pine Top Lakeside Town Hall. There is also an Amazon wishlist and Venmo account provided on some brochures and posters which Kev has, and we can leave it on the back table for you guys. And we have the Backpack Snacks White Mountain Facebook page if there are any other questions. Any donations are appreciated to feed the kids at the White Mountains, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Very, very nice job. It's great what you guys are doing, but can you introduce who's behind you and what their part of the program is, please?
Hi, my name is Alyssa Shumway, and I am a chairman.
My name is Kemp Smithson, and I'm the treasurer of the committee.
I'm River Rigg, and I'm just a member who helps out in the committee.
I'm Rockwell Rigg, and I'm just a member too.
Nice. Well, thank you, guys. You guys have any questions? Thank you, guys, very much for what you do. I think I heard some conversation up here earlier about us getting a little more involved in that program as well, so we appreciate you guys coming, and thank you very much for you for our community, very much. Thank you.
I also have a question. If you guys are okay with it, it might have to discuss afterwards, but if we could put a donation box here at your guys' chambers right here to accept donations for the Backpack Snacks as well.
Might be better over at City Hall, but, or at the library.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, staff. Absolutely. If you brought some with you, bring them in, or bring them down to City Hall and we'll take care of it for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Keith, you don't want to say anything? It's a long drive for you not to talk, right?
One time I know that.
I know. Thank you, guys. Great job. Is Steve here? I don't see him here either. We have one person on special event. Next item on the agenda is update on the tracks, White Mountain System, but I don't see Mr. Dobbs is here, so we'll move right along. Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We're going to poll A and we'll read that proclamation, so we'll go to B. Proclamation by Mayor proclaiming April 2025 as child abuse prevention month. Proclamation by Mayor proclaiming April 25 as fair housing month. Consideration of memorandum and understanding with Cholo Library and Friends. Consideration of non-commercial hangar development and ground lease. Consideration of Resolution Number R 2025-11. Consideration of approval of declaration of surplus property. Consideration of acceptance of sunken manhole repair. Consideration of submitting PFAS substance claim against TYCO. Consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting on March 18th and the study session on March 18, 2025, and the regular meeting on March 18, 2025. I entertain a motion to accept, or you want to poll something?
I move to accept the consent calendar as read.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Whipple. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. A, item A on the consent calendar is proclamation by Mayor proclaiming April 5 through 11, 2025 as the week of young child in the city of Cholo. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education environments, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five, and whereas early care and education teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school, and whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity. And whereas Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, First Things First, and other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in the city of Cholo, and whereas public policies that support early care and education for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now therefore, John Leach Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, does hereby proclaim April 5 through the 11, 2025, as the week of the young child in the city of Cholo, and encourages all citizens to support and invest in early care and education in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mrs. McGavick. Thank you for everything you do. And if you want to say a few words, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, wait, I gotta turn around.
Yay.
You want to say anything?
No, I'm good, but thank you so much for doing this. It really means a lot to everybody that works in here.
Everything you guys do, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda under new business. We don't have Mr. Dobbs here still. Consideration of award of construction contract for a 3,000 gallon tank maintenance, City of Cholo Project Number W 6725, and authorize of associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemsaw.
Councilman, good evening. Thank you. The city acquired the Park Valley Fools Hollow Water Company September of 2012. Included in that acquisition was a 300,000 gallon water storage tank. To integrate the storage tank into the city's water system, a booster station is required to adjust the tank to the existing water pressures in our system. However, due to the age of the tank, the facility was taken offline for anticipated repairs and maintenance. The scope of the project is to complete repairs, including installing a second new 30-inch shell manway access, removing and replacing the 24-inch roof vent, installing a liquid level indicator, lockable ladder door cage, and two sections of eight-foot-long safety railing on top of the tank. These repairs are required to bring the tank up to current codes. The scope of the work also includes exterior and interior surface blasting and the installation of new paint and coatings. City staff designed the project with a construction estimate of $250,000. The project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Southwest Tanks and Steel Incorporated, $229,507.0, Viking Painting LLC, at $323,850, and Professional Piping Systems LLC, at $41,047.0. Staff recommends award of the construction contract for the 300,000 gallon tank maintenance, City of Cholo Project Number W 6725, to Southwest Tanks and Steel Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed that $229,507.0, and authorize the associated budget transfers. The bid tab and the area for location of the tank is attached. I'm here for any questions.
I have a couple. How long has that been off?
It's been off for quite a few years. I would say close to probably 10 years that thing's been offline. We've been anticipating the repairs on this, and we've been able to use our existing system without really requiring it, but now it's time to get that tank online.
So I'm going to, so obviously it's repairable. I mean, that tank's pretty old. I mean, we got it in 2012. When did they get it? Do we know?
No, I don't have the exact date of it.
Okay.
It's definitely old, but we did have it looked at prior to putting the scope of work together and have the tank evaluated for what we need to do to bring it up to code and get it into the system, and that's what we got the scope of work.
And I don't know if I heard or not, but where is this subdivision getting their water?
This subdivision actually is connected to the greater, we'll call it Zone 2 of City of Cholo, and basically Tank 5 on top of Whipple Road there, those two tanks, the pressure zone, feeds the whole greater City of Cholo area, and they're getting the pressure and that water from that area. This tank is going to be kind of utilized as just a buffer during the day, so we're going to fill it at night and then drain it during the day when we see the high demand. And then we have to pump the tank dry to get it into the system or the tank overflow, but we'll fill it during the night, pump during the day, and just supplement our system with an extra 300K a day.
You just answered my other two questions. Good, thank you. Questions? Yeah, you asked my question, so.
This is the one over by Cholo Park?
Is that? Yes, it's behind Park Place subdivision there, around the corner, up on the end, the dead end of 20th Ave there, correct.
Well-hidden. Any other questions, comments, or Councilman?
I have a question. Have we used Southwest Tanks and Steel before, or do we have like knowledge about their work and how good of a contractor they are?
We do have past knowledge with them, and I believe they've done some work with the city in the past, so I feel comfortable with them, yeah.
Well, wait, one more. That leads me to another question, though. If they get into this, they've already looked at it, know it's repairable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, thanks.
I'll move toward the destruction contract for a 300,000 gallon tank maintenance, City of Cholo Project Number W-6725, to Southwest Tanks and Steel Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $220,507.0, and authorize the associated budget transfers.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Alright, next item on the agenda, consideration of award or purchase of decorated lights. Mr. Hemsaw.
Thank you. The city is currently constructing downtown streetscape improvements along North 11th Street between East Cooley and East Huning. The funding for the improvements will cover the installation of the culvert, sidewalk, paving areas, conduit, and lighting pole bases. The purchase of the actual decorative lighting needs to be purchased with other funding. The city will also be completing parking lot improvements for the city's parcel located at the southwest corner of East Hall and North 11th Street next to the library, and that project's actually going out to bid Friday. To increase the efficiency of delivery, staff would like to make a single purchase for all the decorative lights in this corridor. Staff has identified the funding in the Street CIP improvements budget to purchase the decorative lighting for the corridor. Twenty-five decorative lights will be purchased for the 11th Street streetscape improvements and future parking lot area. The city requested a quote from distributor of the city's standard decorative light utilizing the Sourcewell Contract Number 091422-WES. Wesco Distribution provided a quote resulting in the total cost for the lights of $154,822.40. Staff recommends award of the purchase of the decorative lighting to Wesco Distribution in an amount not to exceed that $154,822.40. There's an area of the approximate location of the lights and a quote, and I'm here for questions.
Thanks, sir. Just excited that moving forward on that project, just going to have to get a lot more, no parking signs up there for daytime use, but any other questions or comments? I'm glad to see this is moving forward. This is going to be good. Can already see they started working right there, that whole area last week, so. No more? Councilman Adams, motion?
Absolutely. Move toward the purchase of decorated lighting to Wesco Distribution in the amount not to exceed $154,022.40.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of award of purchase of City of Cholo vehicles and authorize associated budget transfer. Mr. Austin? I was going to call you Mr. Rick, but that just doesn't fit. I just call you Rick all the time.
That'll work. Mr. Mayor and Council, fiscal year 2025 budget includes fund from four departments and public works to purchase eight city vehicles, including seven 3/4 tons trucks and one 1-ton truck. Each truck was sent to bid with a request that it be equipped with the city's standard equipment, which would include a service body, pipe racks, a commercial snowplow system, light bars, and two-way radios. Bid packets were hand-delivered to four local dealers, which included Hatch Toyota, Arizona Dodge, Cholo Ford, and Horn Auto Center. A mandatory pre-bid conference was held on February 27, 2025, with one of the four local dealers attending. A bid was received by Cholo Ford on March 6, 2025. Responsive bidders, along with their respective bid amounts and the division to which the trucks were all allocated, are attached in the bid summary. Due to the rising prices of trucks and the standard uplift from the vehicles, the bid exceeded the budget by $22,975.56. Staff recommends transferring the shortages from the capital improvements line in each prospective department funds. Staff recommends approving the purchase of eight city vehicles from Cholo Ford for an amount not to exceed $742,975.56, and authorize the associated budget transfers.
Thank you, sir. One out of five, is there a reason they just don't like, the other ones don't like bidding?
They don't like bidding fleet vehicles.
Fleet vehicles, okay.
We did happen to get a bid way after the fact from the Arizona Dodge, and he didn't attend the pre-bid, and it was a late bid.
Oh, okay. When you go into something with no competition, I just, anyway.
I make a motion.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I just want to thank Rick, you and your team for doing this, and also I'm happy that this is going to a local vendor. I like it when we do that. It keeps our money here on the mountain, so that's great that you went through all the procurement responsibilities and it's still, we were able to award it to a local vendor. So I'll move toward the purchase of eight vehicles from Cholo Ford in amount not to exceed $742,976.56, authorize the associated budget transfers.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Judd. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of authorization to purchase an AquaFlow International Inc. automotive, automated, self-serve bulk watering loading station. Wow. City of Cholo Project Number W 3925, and authorize associated budget transfers.
2025 budget included a self-serve bulk water station and AquaFlow International Incorporated. Our flagstaff is the sole vendor specializing in automatic bulk water payment systems for water companies to facilitate their bulk water sales. Staff has received several calls for single truckloads of water from individuals who do not want to go through the process of obtaining a bulk meter and paying the deposit only to return it the next day. The process takes several hours to complete, including setup and retrieval of the meter as well as backflow assembly. Additionally, administrative hours are required to set up a new account for each transaction and to take the return, and take the return deposit. This station will sell portable water to the public and contractors. Payment can be made with a credit or debit card with an account or an account number. No staff must be present for the transactions. It is a self-serve system. Staff recommends the purchase of the AquaFlow International Incorporated Automatic Bulk Water Loading Station in the amount not to exceed $57,222.85, and authorizing the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? I have one. First words are going to be located, and second, is it going to be 24 hours where somebody can use it?
It's located off Thornton at our city shop, right where we fenced in the old yard, and it is 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Wow, that's, well, I think they have this. If I'm not mistaken, they have one of these in Williams. Pretty sure by Arizona, they have the same, well, look, people go up there, run a card and fill up with water, they're portable tanks, you know, because a lot of people are off the grid over there, so. Okay, any other questions or comments or motions? Councilman Whipple?
I move to authorize the purchase of an AquaFlow International Inc. automated self-serve bulk water loading station in an amount not to exceed $57,222.85, and authorize the associated budget transfer.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir, and thank you for looking into something like that. I think that's really good, to get a lot of people from all over, so it's really good. Okay, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. Anybody down there? Ah, I don't hear anything. Really? Well, take a couple minutes. I'll take... It's ready, buddy.
Yeah, I was just going to say, with the weather warming up and especially down in the valley, it looks like our summer visitors will be here probably sooner rather than later, so I know that when that happens, traffic increases exponentially, so invite everybody in the public just to maintain calm and peace and don't get too upset when they're out driving, and be vigilant while you're out driving, because it seems like every year, the number of people on the road continue to increase year-round, and so I anticipate that's going to happen this year as we get ready to enter our summer months, so.
Right turn only.
Right turn only, Mayor. I'm going to get you a shirt like that. Lot of those two words, right, right turn only.
I just got one thing, just obviously, we know we're still in red flag warnings, stage one fire restrictions, probably going to change, I would guess. I haven't really talked to none of the fire guys, I don't know if the city manager's got an update, but it's probably going to move. I know we've got some weather coming in, but we all know it's not going to be enough, so just if you see something going on in there that's not right, please call it in. Don't, or go talk to your neighbor, whatever. There was a, another guy burning a couple weeks ago in a burn bale in his backyard, eight-foot flames, and the neighbor was afraid to go over there. They finally did, but it's like, oh my gosh. So don't be afraid. We got to save our community, save our, the people of our community, for sure, so just be safe out there, and like Councilor Clark said, it's going to get busy. There's a lot going on in our community, you know, starting, starting here in April, we have the Easter egg hunts happening, and from there on, it's going to be going every weekend, so be safe. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yes, we are going to stay on stage one fire restrictions for another week, but we'll see how it goes. We get a little moisture this week. So, you know, last time I didn't have anything to report, so this time it's going to be a long list.
Oh, no way. Can you save it for Thursday?
So just as the mayor indicated, we do have some events coming up. The 3K hair color run and walk at the new pavilion at Sholo City Park on Saturday, April 12th. Color toss starts at 8:10 a.m. Also on Saturday, April 12th, there's the hair-raising Fun Candy scramble starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Sholo City Park. You can find more information on our website. Make everybody aware of our annual MLK Day of Service. This is where volunteers work on a community project. This is Saturday, April 26th. We'll meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Sholo School District Office for work assignments, and return to the district office for a lunch, prepared for the volunteers. Remember to wear closed-toed shoes, bring gloves and a hat, and you can call 532-4014 for more information. As part of the Sholo, the barbecue throwdown that we have, we also have our city incorporation anniversary party. I believe it's 72 years this year. Scheduled for May 2nd at the Frontier Fields. From 5:00 to 9:30, there's going to be lots of events, some live music, free hot dogs and hamburgers, chips, dessert, giveaway prizes, games, raffle prizes, and you can call 532-4014 for more information. And as we've talked about tonight, we have a public works project going on here on 11th Street, the sidewalk installed and the culvert, so be careful in that area, and that's all I have.
Just to add to the barbecue throwdown, just to let everybody know, the public's invited to both days, Friday and Saturday, but the public event is Friday, May 2nd. Is that May 2nd?
Yes.
They're welcome to come on May 3rd for the barbecue contest, but there's not a lot going on, just a bunch of guys standing around cooking steaks, and we have a bunch of different sides that we're going to do this year. For us, it's pretty exciting, but the major event for the public is definitely Friday, so I know there was a lot of confusion, well, what are we going to do Saturday? Well, we're going to cook. You're more than welcome to hang around and listen to what we got on our radios, but that's about all that will be going on on that Saturday, so the event for the public is definitely Friday. Scheduling meetings.
So again, a reminder, the budget, Town Hall and Study Session, Thursday, April 3rd at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers, and then want to remind you, on April 15th, we're going to have a study session at 6:00 p.m. The group that did our workforce housing study grant is going to present their findings to you at that time. It'll be right before our next council.
And I believe I heard Mr. Johnson make a comment about doing this in one night, so if you need a pillow Thursday, you don't have to worry about snacks. Rachel, make sure you get one of these snacks. I know John's going to need probably some. Anyway, plan on, if you want to get it done in one night, so most, most of the time this council definitely does, just plan on a few hours. Alright, if nobody's got anything else, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it.